Hey everybody, welcome back to another episode of the 435 Podcast. I'm your host, Robert McFarland. Over the next several episodes, guys, we're going to be doing a deep dive into the 2025 municipal elections. Mayors and city council members from all over Southern Utah are going to be seeking your vote in helping shape the future of our cities. So this is the place that you're going to be able to get one-on-one conversations with all the candidates to help you make the best decision for you come election season. So please make sure you like and subscribe, share it with other voters throughout Washington County, and make sure they have the information they need to make the decisions that are going to be best for us in the county. We hope you enjoy this episode and this series of episodes, guys. We'll see you out there.
From the Blue4 Media Studios, this is the 435 Podcast, the pulse of Southern Utah.
Cindy Maticha, you're running for Hurricane City Council.
Yes, so excited.
So excited. I know, the election's coming up. You're kind of in the home stretch at this point.
Right, August 12th.
August 12th is coming up. Ballots are going to be in the mail in just like a couple of weeks.
July 22nd.
Yeah, so and I think people are getting used to the whole, just when they get the ballot, just do the ballot and go drop it off.
Or mail it.
Yeah, don't mail it.
I advise it dropping off, you know, dropping off at the library or the city.
I don't trust the mailing thing. I don't trust the mailing thing.
It's got to go through Vegas, too.
Yeah, it leaves and then comes back and you're like, where's, where's this going?
It's like following an Amazon package.
Exactly, exactly. So yeah, it's coming up. Tell me a little bit about you. How'd you, how'd you get to Hurricane, Utah?
So it's, it's a little bit of a, a long story, so I'm, I'm gonna try to take my time explaining it. Yeah, so I am a teacher originally. I taught in Goochlin, Virginia, which is right outside of Richmond, about 30 miles outside of Richmond. Born and raised, a Goochlin girl all my life, had two wonderful parents, and I'm an only child. And like taught at the middle school. I also worked on Sesame Street at one point for 10 years.
I love that.
All my students were like, did you know Elmo? I was like, no, I didn't know Elmo.
So what did you do for Sesame Street?
I went into the schools and did professional development and also worked directly with the FBI in instilling an internet safety program for our students and actually won the presidential award for, from the FBI for working with our kids.
That's cool.
That was awesome.
I read Malcolm Gladwell did, I can't remember which one of his books, I think maybe it had been Tipping Point or Blink. And he talks about the history of Sesame Street. It's so much more complex than just this TV show for kids.
I grew up watching that. The Electric Company. I don't know if you remember that. Probably too.
I think I'm too young for that one. I think I'm too young, but yeah.
I'm a little jealous.
So yeah, I mean, it's, it's a fascinating organization and just the story of Sesame Street. If anybody wants to go on a side quest, look, look at the history of Sesame Street.
I mean, literally, I worked, the name of the street was Sesame Street, which was really cool.
That is cool.
And anyway, yeah, I taught and then, well, Sesame Street while I was there, we had budget cuts and, and I lost my job. And so I ended up, thank goodness, keeping my teaching license and went back into teaching. And when we left Virginia, I had been in Goochlin 11 years, teaching honors English, and also the team lead for sixth grade and the yearbook advisor. So I had a lot going on, plus taking care of really two very ill parents, one with pancreatic cancer, and then my mom had Alzheimer's, but she still came to Utah with me. We got her here right after we moved, a few months after we moved here.
Yeah.
But COVID hit. My husband kept pushing me. He's like, I want to move out west. And I'm like, I'm never leaving. I'm never leaving Virginia. I'm a Virginia girl. I'm never gonna leave.
Yeah.
And he's like, well, we're gonna go on a trip to Prescott, Arizona. So we did. We went to Prescott and visited the Grand Canyon, Sedona, Las Vegas, which was interesting for our eight-year-old son. He's 17 now. Also, I think Seligman, because we had seen the movie Cars, so we kind of wanted to see that. And I fell in love with the West. So it was just like, wow. And I, I do landscape photography as a hobby.
Yeah.
So I just, I was like, oh, it's so beautiful here. And so we get back to Virginia. At that point, my parents were depleting in their health. And then COVID hit. So during COVID, I feel like our elderly suffered and then our children suffered. Our educational system suffered. And so in March, our governor says, no more school. So no more school. And then we start school back in the fall. And then in the fall, our students were only online at that time. And half of, or a majority of Goochlin County is very rural. It's a, it's a farming community and no internet. How are we supposed to teach our kids through a Google Meet if they can barely get online? And it was challenging, not only for our kids, but you know, for the, for the educational community. And then the second nine weeks comes and they're like, well, we'll let six kids into every classroom.
Oh my god.
I know. So six kids, six feet apart, and, and it was a lottery system. And our son got in, thankfully. He was in seventh grade at that point. And it was, it was crazy.
Can I, can I take you a step back?
Yeah.
Cause that, that didn't happen here.
I know, that's why we're here.
As a, as a, as a teacher, like, how did these like meetings go with the, the the districts, the school districts were like, were, were the families just like, yeah, okay? Was there, was there, it just like this overwhelming steamroll effect where it was like, well, this is what we're doing and, and the parents kind of had to sit back and just deal with it, or?
It came from the state down more so. So our governor at the time was Governor, Governor Northam. And Northam said, this is the way it's gonna be. And each school district had to follow the policies that he put in place. So yeah, we have, you know, we have our school board.
But was there any pushback?
Uh, no, I don't think so. It is crazy. So anyway, the, the second nine weeks comes and like I said, we have the six kids per class in the classroom. Lottery system and I'm, you know, I fought to get Matthew back into school. And December came and one of our students took his life. And that was, that was the crown and blow to get us out west. I'm sorry, tears, it tears me up. And, and John's like, it's time to go. And we're, and we looked at Arizona again, but they're, they, they're not good to their teachers. Like they're one of the poorest paying states in the United States for education. And then we didn't like the results for the 2020 election. And we wanted to be where there were conservative Christian values. And so John literally got a map and is like, how about St. George? And I was like, okay. So I went ahead and started the process of getting my endorsement done. I had just finished my licensure to be a principal. And then also I just started putting my application in and that all of a sudden, all these jobs opened up. Now I'm just like, okay, I'm just gonna apply to all of them for Washington County School District. And then a day later, I got an email for a job interview. So I'm at Sunrise Ridge Intermediate now, teaching seventh grade. I was yearbook advisor, kind of backed off a little bit. Just tried to give Matthew, because he's going to be a senior, a little bit of extra attention, but here I am running for city council now. And any, everything just fell into place the way it was supposed to be. It's like, we were supposed to be here. And when we visited in the spring, after I had gotten hired 2,200 miles away through a Google Meet, Matthew, our son, fell in love with the community in Hurricane that we looked at. They had an Easter egg hunt going on and he was 13. And he's like, this is what I've waited all my life for. Because our neighborhood back in Virginia, we were on four acres. Every house was on four to 10 acres. And we, we didn't have, we never had trick or treaters. And now we can't buy enough candy at our house. So it just, it all fell into place. And we just loved every aspect of, of the community and.
I want to linger on this thought, uh, cause it just, it's a, it's so poignant. And part of this tension that growing cities have is that there was at one point, a kid in Hurricane who was like, I just want to get out of this small town.
Right.
And I just, I, I just, I want an experience like this. And, and then we grow. And then there's this part of the community that's like, we have to stop growing.
Right.
And then we're like, thinking of like, the values that this person holds versus the values of what this person holds. We, we run after this. The grass is always greener on these other sides. And yet we end up all circling around really similar issues. And we kind of just circle them. Like we rarely even like attach, attach solutions to some of these things. But it's just, it's very interesting. It kind of, it kind of gave me a little bit of a heart wrench to think of like, him moving here and thinking like, this is, this is like the kind of community that I've, I dreamed about as a, as a young kid in a rural area.
He loves it here.
And a lot of Hurricanes like, we want to stay rural. We want to stay small. And then it's like, but you know, there's this flux that's happening. And we're in this transition. So it's really tough. But so that was just really powerful. That was powerful to think about is that there's so many different perspectives and there's so many families that have opposing views on how we deal with these issues. But you know, having a mix of all those opinions is what's really healthy is allowing those things to be out there.
Right. He, he's, he's 17 and you know, wants to be 18 and giving me a little bit of run for our money as a family. And he's our only, he's our only one. We didn't get married till I was 36, I think. And then we, we found out we wanted a family and
Yeah.
And we had him. And I wouldn't give him up for anything. And he's studying at Career Tech High School, the brand new high school out towards
That's awesome.
airport and, and then the engineering pathway like his dad. So we're very proud of him. He's at work. He would be here, but he is working at Walmart.
Nice.
40 hours a week and maintaining an A B average. So we're.
Way to go. What's his name?
Matthew.
Matthew. Shout out to Matthew.
Oh, thank you. He'll love that.
Good work, man. Keep it up, keep, keep it up. So you, you got here. What's, what kind of ignited you to run for city council?
Um, I was involved back in Virginia, always like looking to be a leader, I think. Especially looking at the principal program and you know, I wanted to be an administrator. And, and also I had to address, so I, I got really mad one day in our neighborhood. In Virginia, we have what's called the Board of Supervisors, which is like the city council that we have here in the various areas. And, and Matthew and I, I was taking him to school and we lived off this very rural road called Riddles Bridge Road. And somebody, and there's Coyote Creek, which is down below, and just trash everywhere. Like people were just tossing trash everywhere. And, and I reached out to the community. We have a Facebook group called Goochlin Living. And I like, can send me pictures because it was, seemed to be a thriving thing that was going on in our community that people were just trashing it. And it was a beautiful county. And I had, I swear, I made a PowerPoint with 45 different slides of where people have just been dumping stuff. And I'm like, I'm going to the Board of Supervisors and I'm gonna speak. And I did. Like, they're like, does anybody in the public want to speak? And I was the first one up there that night. And, and then there was a newspaper article that came out about, you know, Cindy Maticha talked about Goochlin was looking like a third world country because of all the trash and stuff that was there. So that kind of like pushed me to start looking at more of a leadership aspect. And then when we moved to Hurricane, we had some issues in our neighborhood that were going on that some women wanted to make it an HOA and it's not an HOA. And I'm like, I'm gonna go talk to the mayor. And I emailed Nanette and I'm like, she's never gonna email me back. I'll never hear from her. And then four hours later, she sends me an email and like, come on in and meet me. And I, and I'm like, can I bring Matthew? Because I'm like, Matthew, you're 13. You get to meet the mayor. And, and I think that was like, that was a kick in the butt for me. I talked to her and I'm like, I think I'm gonna run for city council at some point.
Yeah.
And then this past year, there was another neighborhood thing that was going on. And I'm just like, I, I did it. I was like, I'm gonna do it.
Yeah.
So we'll see. I mean, I'm, I'm new, like I've been here four years, but I just feel like I want to make a difference in the community. So.
What do you, what do you think is the role? What's the proper role of the city government? If, you know, from what you came from, kind of your understanding, what, what is their job from what you think?
The way I look at it is that we listen to what the community wants and needs. I did, so I always try to, even when I'm teaching, give examples. So I, an example is I went to the planning commission meeting last Thursday night because there's a lot of talk about a civic center that's coming in. And to me, I think about a civic center. Growing up, Virginia Civic Center was like ice hockey, college basketball. So even for myself, I wasn't understanding completely what was going on. So for me to learn, I'm just gonna go to and hear what, what has to be said. Yeah, what's the plan? So I went Thursday night, I think it was, we had already been at the office for something else. And then I went home and came back. And anyway, I attended the meeting and, and I listened to the people come forward who had concerns. And at that point, I was, that's just to me, what, what we need is somebody up there who will listen and be like, okay, let's talk about this. And that's what the planning commission did. They, they stopped at a point where everybody had spoken. And there was this huge discussion amongst themselves. And I'm like, that's what leadership is, right? And I've spoken at city council, but I didn't see a pause to have a discussion. And I want that to happen. I think there needs to be that part of a community where we've listened to each other. And I, I listened to a farmer talk about, I've been here all my life and you know, he, he feels differently. He's like, I'm being overwhelmed by all this building that's going on. So it is, it is crazy. I mean, I talked to Zach and he was telling me that Zach Runstrom, I guess I should say that.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna ask. I wasn't sure which Zach.
And he was saying that Washington County within the past five years has grown 1,210%. And that's just, whoo, that's culture shock for a lot of people. So I, I get it. I understand. And we need to grow. If we don't, we're going to go into a recession. But I think there needs to be like this balance. But I feel like we need to be heard. Like, and I'm a citizen right now. So that's why I'm saying like, we need to speak up for whatever issues that we have. And that the city council embraces those things.
So, so how do you weigh out, how do you weigh out what the community feels with your own judgment? How do you, you know, how do you determine? Especially when maybe there's a large portion or seemingly large portion feels this way. What, what's your kind of thought process on how do you, how do you make a strategy moving forward? And how do you weigh that against your own judgment?
That's kind of hard because I'm a citizen of that city as well. So I, I don't want to be biased because I can't say, oh, I'm gonna do it this way because I feel like that too. It's got to be a discussion between the two parties and see how they each, each feels. You know, how each feels about the perspective of whatever, whatever the issue might be. I'm just trying to think of an example that I was gonna give, but I don't think I have one right off the top of my brain right now.
Yeah. I, I think that that's the biggest one is development, allowing development. Is it, is it the role of the city to pick winners and losers or allow certain projects to go and, and not other projects to go in face of what the community input is saying. And so, you know, I think that's going to be, especially for the city council role, land use is, is majority of what that job really entails, right? And so what is your perspective on land use? And how, how would you approach as, as things come down the pipeline for approvals? Have you thought through like, what, what is your, how is your community input and your own judgment going to play into making those decisions?
That's a good question. I know behind our home, like John and I like to bike frequently and we get, we, well, in the winter, it's windy in Hurricane and cold.
Go figure.
Yeah. And I, I say hurricane a lot, so forgive me if I do.
Only a couple more years and you'll stop.
Right. It's south, southern accent still kind of lingering around. But I know behind us is, there's four neighborhoods going up. And we're like, when we went biking in the spring, we're like, whoa, where did that come from? So thankfully, Nanette's like, all right, when I put in my paperwork to run for city council, she texted me and she's like, I'm gonna come by and visit and just talk. And that's Sitluland or Utah Trust Land that's behind us that's been sold for that purpose. So yeah, I, you know, being an educator, I, I love that we're supporting education. But then we have all these homes being built. And then the big question is that I get all the time, what about water? Are we gonna run out of water? That's one of the reasons I met with Zach. And, and so, ugh, it's so hard to balance it out because you're like getting land or selling land that's gonna support education, universities, healthcare. But then here we have all these homes being built too. So it's, it's just got to be a discussion to be had between amongst all the parties, you know, mayor, city council, people, like. And I think a part of the problem is too, that you can't always access the information that is needed. I, I mean, my parents, growing up, my mom loved to read the newspaper. That was like her big deal every morning, her cup of coffee and a newspaper and my dad too. And we don't, there's no newspaper anymore.
Yeah, in high school, I read the newspaper every single day. In high school, that was, I mean, it was still, I graduated in '05. And so it was like all of the early 2000s. I, I am. And I still read the newspaper every single day. That was, that was part of, I got it at lunch. I sat down at lunch and I, we read the newspaper. I mean, that was, that was what we did.
I mean, and I'm speaking from my own personal experience, like, again, the civic center, I'm thinking civic center and that, what, how huge that's gonna be. And that's not the case. The civic center is gonna be multi-use area for offices, for, for city offices, for, there is going to be a little bit of a commercial area, but the, and also there's homes being built back there too. That was another thing with the planning commission meeting that they want to go from R10 to R4. I'm like, what is an R10 and R4? So I started researching that. And then the planning commission listened to the people. They kept it in R10. And just for whoever's watching, R4 means like one house per 4,000 square feet. And that R10 is one house per 10,000.
10,000 square feet, yep.
So I was like, I'm learning, I'm learning so much as I go along and just like attending other things. So.
Yeah. 52,000 square feet in an acre.
Right.
So when you think like, okay, so how many is it? 10, 10 to 15 homes?
Right. And I think it ended up being 21, 24, after they did all the math. I had my phone out trying to calculate.
Yeah. How many would be in that area? Yeah.
So originally it would have been like 34 and then it brought it down to 22.
Yeah. And so, so thinking, thinking of that development, are you in favor of that kind of a development? Is that something that you, you think's valuable?
So that development originally, the way they talked was all gonna be rental property. And so my concern is for the residents that are already there, two things. The residents that are already there, is it gonna depreciate their homes? That was a concern that came up. So why can't we make those homes sellable instead of rental? But I understand the housing crisis too. We, we, I can tell you our own personal story and how we got there. And also there's a concern for traffic in that area because that's behind Lynn's Grocery. There are multiple accidents there all the time. I, I tend to be, I listen to the fire rescue on the scanner. I'm a, I'm a scanner junkie. So I listen to that.
I like it.
And so I hear that all the time. So yeah, we need a traffic study there before we start like building a bunch of homes. How are we gonna handle all that? So we need to have the infrastructure in place to be able to support, to support with the growth. So.
Yeah.
And SR9 is just crazy busy anymore.
Yeah. It's an artery. It's a, it's a highway without being one.
Right. So I did talk to the mayor about that. And I know that UDOT in the future has planned, there are some exit ramps and entrance ramps to make the flow a little bit better. So.
Yeah. Which is a lot. It's very costly. And that gets into, what, what is your view on the relationship between city government, county and state?
And federal.
Yeah, and federal. Like, how do you view that relationship and how should it look?
So I, I, we need to have that relationship, right? You can't, you can't ignore the state or the federal government, although sometimes you might want to. But you have to have, in, in order to be a strong community, there has to be that communication between the three. But Hurricane in itself should be autonomous and may be able to make their own decisions about how they're going to work with their community. And, and that, that is just my perspective on it.
Yeah.
Also, I mean, so I do have grumps with Mike Lee and what he was trying to pull selling the BLM land. And I mean, that's our land. So I was, I was not a happy camper with the federal government on that one.
Yeah.
But I also understand like why he wanted to do it because he wanted to put affordable housing in, but.
Do you know there's only 38 states? Or there's, there's 38 states that don't have Bureau of Land Management? The only BLM land is west of Colorado.
Oh, wow.
In the entire country. It's very interesting. When you look at the Bureau of Land Management and, and where it lands, it's all in the west. It's all, it's all the west, right? And so there's no Bureau of Land Management in Virginia or Tennessee or Texas or Oklahoma.
I was like, BLM land. I was, I was confused. So and now we, we Jeep all over it.
Yeah, it makes, it's what makes us unique, right? And so that, that's where I can see the pushback from even people in Utah and, and across the west of saying, hey, wait a minute, this is part of what makes us unique and special. And, and I think that plan was, is, was interesting. But it kind of, it kind of dovetails into what I'm trying to understand is how do you view economic growth in a community's wellbeing? Like what is the role of that economic growth in a community's wellbeing? And then how do you compare that with other priorities like quality of life and preserving the cultural nature of what the city already has?
So we need economic growth in order to not go into a recession, obviously. But I think it needs to be at a pace that's not gonna be such a culture shock to our, our people. Because I've, I just, I feel like they are overwhelmed right now a little bit, at least from what I've heard.
The community as a whole feels overwhelmed?
I, it, it seems that way. Like from the meetings I've been at, I have attended, the, they're, they're concerned. They're concerned for public safety. I did a ride along with the, one of our police officers.
Nice way to go.
It was awesome for two hours and just explained to me, we have three full-staffed police officers on a shift and a lieutenant or sergeant. But three, three guys to handle all of Hurricane, I mean, you know, it's crazy. It goes up, he took me everywhere, leads, right on the edge of the Verkin, the Verkin, the back, you know, everywhere. And he's like, sometimes it'll take us 20 minutes to get where we need to be. We need more, we need more police officers to help out. So I think in order for that, our community to be healthy and safe, we need to make sure that we have all the money in place so we don't go into this crisis mode. And yeah, but don't overbuild and overwhelm our, and our people, our residents.
What, what is the, what do you think the function, like what, how do you functionally you know, fix that lever, right? Is like, how do you, it, it seems like it's either open or closed a lot of times, right? So what do you think is?
With economic growth.
With growth. Like, do you see that if there's like a mechanism? Do you, do you?
Well, I think there are other ways. Well, we, for financials, I think we can look at, at government bonds, grants. There's other ways that we can get money besides just building everything all the time. Yeah, that's, I just think there are other, there are other ways to do that. We do have, we're building a, a new pool, like community center. I think near the old pool. I don't know if you've been back there. My son actually worked there part-time for, for a bit. And a big chunk of that, the money to build that came from the Washington County School District.
Yeah.
Because now the swim team doesn't have to come all the way into Washington. They have a place to go.
Makes it nice.
So yeah, I'm like, oh, kudos to the school district I work for. So to give those students that opportunity. So that's exciting. And I hear that from, from the kids that are friends with Matthew, like we need, we need more community things for us to do instead of driving all the way into St. George. And I, I get that. So I, I'm, I think we can grow, but we need to do it at a pace that's not so shocking and scary to, to our residents. Especially, especially the farming community. I like, they're such good people, you know? And I know I grew up, my grandmother was a farmer. So it was, it, they're just such an essential part of, of who we are.
Yeah.
We don't want to lose that.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's tough to prioritize those different things, right? How do you prioritize them? And how do you?
I have to learn, right?
Yeah, definitely.
You know, as an educator, I try to just learn.
Learn.
Yeah. Lifelong learner. You gotta learn as you go.
Yeah, that's right. So it, it does seem like the, there's a lot of tension being built up in this election in Hurricane.
We talked about that a few minutes ago.
Yeah. And so what do you, what do you think that is stemming from?
Social media's got a lot to do with it.
Yeah.
Right. So I just, I, I try to, I'm trying to be quiet. I don't, I do have a blog where I just write my concerns or my viewpoints on different things. I also shared information about our family so they can get to know us and why we came here. But yeah, it's a lot of, there's a lot of negativity and just, we're all good people. That's one of the reasons we moved here is because there's so many good Christian conservative values that are here for our family. And I, I, I don't, I can't.
Doesn't seem like it's showing up all that well at the moment.
I can't go out and throw candy out all the time like I did at the parade. I make everybody happy.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's, just stay off social media. But I mean.
It's where we get, it's where we're getting our information too.
I know, but it's just like, there's so much negativity and there's, there's so many positive aspects of every candidate that is out there that is running.
Yeah. Do you, do you think part of it is, is the way candidates? Yeah. Do you, do you think part of it is, is the way candidates are running? Or do you think it's, we're getting swept up into it? The candidates and the community are getting swept up into it together?
Um, possibly. I, I don't, I don't, I see some candidates defending themselves on social media. And, and I get it. You're trying to, you wanna win. I mean, I would love to win. I want the vote, but I'm not gonna stoop to a new low to try to get that. Um, I just, I try to be a good person all the time, all the time. And I mean, you, you lead by example. And as an educator, I'm, I have to lead and and like be the example for a hundred and forty kids every day.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
It's hard work. They're so fun though.
That's probably one of the toughest jobs out there is.
Especially middle school. Seventh graders.
And then kindergarten. I don't know, but there's some, you gotta, you gotta be wired a certain way to be a kindergarten teacher.
So my mom was a seventh grade teacher. And I was determined I was not gonna be a teacher. So, oh, yet here I am. I was gonna be a real estate agent. And then I took my first real estate class in college at VCU. And I'm like, no.
You picked the right one. I'm a real estate agent. You picked the right one. I appreciate that.
Yeah. And my, my grandmother taught in a one-room schoolhouse in Green, Virginia. So I know, it's in the blood. So.
Yeah. Well, that's pretty awesome. Is, what, is there anything you wanna leave the voters with? What, any last thoughts? Things that are important to you?
Just make sure you, you take time to read about the values that we all have. And don't rely on, hey, I'm gonna vote for such and such because they're my friend. That's just do your own thing. Like do, look at your ballot and fill it out based upon how you feel, what you read and what you know about an individual.
Trust your gut.
Yeah. And you know, I tried to, like I said, I give back to the community, community all the time. I think it's a good thing too. Get out there and help each other.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Where can people find more information about you?
I am on Facebook and then I have a blog. I have a business card. I'll give it to you. Cindy Matica for Hurricane City Council is on Facebook.
Okay. And I think I have it on the Vote SDG website already. I think I found it. Um, so yeah, if, if you're wanting to know more information about all those other candidates, you can go, obviously Cindy Matica for Hurricane Council.
You got the last name down to a T. Good job.
I nailed it. Uh, or go to VoteSDG.com. Her website's gonna be right there, uh, along with this interview, her survey. I think you did the survey. You did the survey. It's already posted up there. And uh, yeah, we're covering Ivan, Santa Clara, St. George, Washington, Hurricane. Make sure you share this out with a friend. Make, make sure everybody knows as much information as they can to make the best decision for their city. Which is the purpose of the, the podcast and the series. So we hope you enjoyed it. Good luck, Cindy.
Thank you so much.
All right, guys. And we'll see you out there. Get out the vote. Thanks for listening in. If you enjoyed this episode, please like and subscribe. Make sure you're following us on all the social media websites. We love your support. We love the dialogue. We wanna continue that going.
Find us at realestatefourthreefive.com. We'd love to help you find a house here in town or help you get wherever you're going.